Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone here tonight. If you would please adjust your microphones and be sure that they're on. Before we actually get started with our call to order and our invocation tonight, we're going to have a short ceremony with the oath of office. So Connor Jones representing Ward Two, Position Two, Kendall Stuckey, Ward Three, Position Two, and David Adams, Ward Four, Position Two. So if you all would like to just join me out front here, we'll go through this oath of office and then we'll return to our seats. How's that?
You didn't do this up there at the county, or did you?
Yeah, I went over. Let the judge do it. I didn't think they were going to do this.
Okay. I'll just join in. And then we'll hold this side. It's real short. Let's hold your right hand. A little official there. You gotta look in and put your name in after I say "aye," okay? Aye?
Aye.
David Adams. Exalt me square.
Exalt me square.
I support the Constitution of the United States. Support the Constitution.
Sorry, I'm sworn in.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas. Constitution of the State of Arkansas. And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Alderman.
Of the Office of Alderman.
For the City of Lowell.
The City of Lowell.
Upon which I am now about to.
Among which I am now about to.
Okay, ladies? Thank you for running for alder. Okay, that brings us to the call of order of our regular council meeting at 6:34 p.m. tonight. I've asked Alderman Dean Bitner to lead us in invocation. So when we stand, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious and wonderful Heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. Pray that you'll watch over us and guide us as we work on behalf of the citizens of Lowell. We're thankful for those who have served and those who are newly elected and are about to serve. And above all, we ask that you keep your hand upon us and guide us as we go through the evening's duties. In all these things, we pray, in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, this like this, they give me two of them.
I think we're supposed to make any corrections on that one.
That's the city clerk. Please perform the roll call.
Dean Bitner.
Here.
Connor Jones.
Here.
Keith Williams.
Here.
Eric Shine. Lonnie Jones.
Here.
Kendall Stuckey.
Here.
Thomas Evers.
Here.
David Adams.
Here.
Mayor, we have form.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda items. We have Lowell City Council minutes, regular meeting of December 16, 2014, and also our December financial statement. For any questions, we have a finance director here tonight for the financial statement or any other question regarding the minutes, we could address to the city clerk or myself. Any questions?
Mayor, I would like for our finance director to explain that 54% jump in tax revenue. That would be a real rabbit, I think, if you could pull that one out of your hat. Might kind of give us a brief summary of how those numbers come up.
Well, I actually believe my wife went shopping in Lowell. Truthfully, that's the only explanation I can come up with. While I am here, let me tell you, we finished up last year. Things looked very well financially for us last year. We hit our revenue projection within 1% of what we had projected. Folks, if I could do that three years in a row, I'd go to Vegas. Last year was very, very good. We hit our revenue projections, our expense projections, we were under a little bit. So last year was a very good year for us.
Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion by Dean Bitner, a second by Connor Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, nay. All against, nay. Motion to approve the consent agenda item. You want to go ahead and say that?
Motion to approve the consent agenda was approved.
That brings us to our public forum. Do we have anyone tonight that would like to address the council? Time of public forum is where you have an opportunity to come, address the council each month with any non-agenda item. We always welcome that. We want to know what's on the public's minds so we can address those issues and respond to you. It looks like we have Ronnie Breland.
I wonder if I can get a copy.
It's time for you to come and address the council, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ronnie Breland, 315 Lynch Drive, Apartment 201. For 18 years, and then when I was on council, we brought up the thing about the ADA. And the time I was on council has brought up a couple of times, and nothing's been done about it. Now, before I go any further, I believe everybody knows what the ADA is. And I believe that this city should be ADA compliance or close to compliance because there's a lot of people within this city that have disabilities. One guy used to sit on the council. Now, he has to ride his little thing up and down the street to go to the grocery store. And he has the basket on it, but he has to go down the road. Now, that's nowhere near ADA compliance. If he was to get hit by a vehicle, he'd be in big trouble. So with that said, I like to see that the city get the ADA going and get the city in compliance, or at least partially in compliance with the ADA before any other projects are completed.
Yes.
Ronnie, I like to defend the city on that. You said that there's nothing put in place in 18 years?
Yes.
ADA compliance? And I disagree with that because I know that they put sidewalks in with some grant money that they had at one time, right over here in the corner of Honeysuckle and McClure. And they do have handicapped truncated domes. I'm sure they're put in there to the 2% grade, which is handicapped compliant. Every time they're putting these roads in, they're putting sidewalks in to meet the handicapped compliance.
Right. They are not putting the ramps up. They make the curb there, but they don't have like a ramp to where they go up on them.
They do right over here, Ronnie. Now, and I'm sure these new roads, whenever they're putting in there with the sidewalks, are going to have them.
You're still, when you still come out of, like whatever the subdivision is over there, you're still coming up the road to, like off Honeysuckle. And you still have to come up the road before you hit a sidewalk. Now Ted, when he was on city council, and I think Keith, you remember who I'm talking about, Ted, because he was on council. Now, he has to ride his little cart to the store. Now, he has to ride it down the street.
I understand that, Ronnie, but I mean...
Okay. Now, I mean, and there's a lot of others. I mean, I watched a little four-year-old boy get hit, but right over here on Jackson because there wasn't no sidewalks or anything. And he got throwed up on a stump and got killed, which his mom was right there. I mean, there's got to be sidewalks and everything.
Ronnie, I think the city is working towards that.
Could you bring your remarks to a close? You only have three minutes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I would. Yes, sir, I will.
I think the councilman hit an accurate question for you.
Anyway, all I'm asking is that, you know, you start towards the compliance of the ADA.
Well, I can tell you that every project since I've been here, Ronnie, we have complied with ADA.
Right.
If you'll go down Phase One of McClure, right there in front of the school, you'll see a ramp there.
Right.
That is for that very purpose of helping the disabled and the handicap to be able to access a sidewalk. So as money becomes available, we have had some very good sidewalk projects, such as the senior center on Monroe. We did two blocks there. So we are making attempts to bring ourselves up to that standard.
When you get...
However, we don't have an unlimited bank account, so we have to do them as we have the funds available.
When you...
I'm going to allow Dean to chime in on that, Ronnie, and then we'll have to move on, okay?
Can I say something else, Mayor?
Yes.
When you go from...
Please be brief.
I will. When you go from, like, Honeysuckle up towards the school, when you pass railroad tracks and you get right, I believe it's right in front of Ms... It's right out here, it's the Silla House. You know who I'm talking about?
Ms. Forsy, Vernon.
Ms. Forsy's house. There's no sidewalks there. Well, if kids walk up that way, they've got the potential of getting hit by a vehicle.
Mayor, can I... There are sidewalks now, though, Ronnie, with...
No. There's no sidewalks on that side of the, over there by the museum.
We'll check with you and get back to you, but I can almost assuredly say that there is, Ronnie.
Because I just checked when I came in.
Mayor, I was going to suggest, Mr. Breland, if you don't care, would you put a list together of the addresses that you're, and the areas that you're concerned about on sidewalks, and bring that list maybe to the planning commission, and let the planning commission address those and future developments and futures.
Go all down Brandon.
Right. I understand. We could be here all night trying to pick out this street or that. So if you don't care to compile a list and get it to the planning commission, then we'll try to get this thing done as quickly as we can, as funds allow.
Please ask your address going through the planning department, going through the planning process.
I'm just saying the ADA.
Thank you, Ronnie.
City needs to be ADA compliant.
We're making lots of strides in that area, and we have been, Ronnie. I'm sorry if you don't feel that way. Okay. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak publicly?
That's it.
Okay.
So it's over at 6:45.
6:45. I had 6:38 beginning.
Yes, I did, too.
Okay. That brings us to our time of presentation of ordinances and resolutions. And tonight, I was visiting with the attorney a little bit, and if it would be all right with the council, I would like to interchange Item One for Item Two, where we have a resolution setting forth the meeting rules of the city council for the City of Lowell, and then moving Item One to Item Two, so that we can use our new procedures, hopefully if we both these have been used, then to do that. Can I have a general consensus on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, like sign. Okay, thank you. I think that'll help our business meeting flow a little bit better tonight, okay? So that, if you just want to mark three or two and put one, and mark three one and put two, that's the order that we'll take these things in tonight, okay? Which brings us now to setting forth the meeting rules of the City of Lowell, City Council, for this coming year. So we have been through these pretty meticulously. This is a time for us to discuss if there's anything that we do not like here, or something we might want to change. So floor is open for any comment, any motion to approve. So the biggest changes, obviously, have been in the procedural motions. Motions must be made by city council member before presentation of ordinances and resolutions. It's Item 25.
Page five.
Page five. I'm going to give you a couple of minutes.
Mayor, may I ask Tom a question here?
Yes, sir.
Could you elaborate on that a little bit, exactly what we're asking or what we're saying?
What that would do is, instead of having to wrestle each ordinance with the suspension of the rule, you would do it once and have the vote for all the ordinances that night. And then if any one council member said, "No, I don't want to do that with ordinance number three," you could take that one out of the rule, or actually put it back into the rule, and do it three separate times. But instead of wrestling with it every time, we would just do it one time. We would have a two-thirds vote on that motion at the beginning before ordinances were considered. And then again, if one of you all wanted to take it out, you'd just make a motion to do that. And I think by simple majority, you could pull it back and slow it down if you wanted to.
So if we had multiple ordinances on an agenda that were on the, say, the first, and we could move them to the third and just do it one time? Is that what you're saying?
It would be suspending the rules.
Yes.
Suspend the rule one time, read them all by title only on one occasion.
Right. It'll streamline the process and still give us an opportunity to back up if we need to.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I'll second that.
A second by Kendall, so we have a motion by Dean Bitner, and a second by Kendall Stuckey. Any further discussion? Anyone ready to vote? City clerk, did you have a question or comment?
I did, sir. So just for clarification, Mr. Kiklak, if you could give me a scenario.
Yes, sir.
This would be per meeting? Is that correct? So we have...
Per meeting, once per meeting.
So three out of five ordinances have a one-time reading?
Well, all the ordinances on the agenda that night would be subject to that procedural rule, so right now what we do is we suspend the rule for each ordinance.
In turn, as they come up?
Yes, sir. Instead, we would say, for all the ordinances on the agenda, we're going to suspend the rule. And if that motion passed by two-thirds, it's passed by two-thirds every single meeting, if it did, then that would be the default for all those ordinances.
Okay. And is that done, like, in the agenda before we address the ordinances?
It's going to be inserted in the agenda. I think it's in there, right above old business?
Prior to the presentation of ordinance.
Yes, sir. I guess after public forum. So the mayor will call for a two-thirds vote on that motion.
Okay. So then, if a council member said, "Oh, this particular ordinance, I would like to have the three full readings."
Yep.
Just pull that one out.
You would pull that one out.
Make an exception.
Okay. Yes, sir.
So, and just to clarify again, so it's not just suspending the rules, it's also placing each ordinance on final reading as well?
Well, that's actually the rule. The rule is, the rule has two parts to it.
Okay.
It's a two-part rule. The first part is in full, fully read, and the second part is on three separate days. So when we suspend the rule, we suspend both of those things.
Okay.
Okay. City clerk, perform the roll call, please.
Dean Bitner.
Yes, ma'am.
David Adams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Lonnie Jones.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Eric, excuse me, he's absent. Keith Williams.
Yes.
Connor Jones.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution as presented has been approved. I will assign it resolution number 14-31. Resolution number 14-31.
I'm 15, yeah.
15-01.
Yes.
Excuse me. You're right, ma'am.
So what is the resolution number?
15-01. My mistake. It's a new year. And my first mistake.
Thank you. That brings us now to Item Two, which was previously Item One, which is an ordinance. This ordinance deals with, to prohibit certain tethering of animals, to set forth the standards for allowable tethering of animals and other purposes. And this did go to the ordinance committee, had extended conversation about why this is unnecessary. Ray Drummond is here tonight to, if there are any further questions. But let's go ahead and get a motion, a second, on the floor, so we can discuss this any further if we need to, okay? So I entertain a motion to place this ordinance on third and final reading by title only.
So moved.
A motion by Connor.
Second.
Second by Dean Bitner. Now this opens up for any further discussion that anyone would like to have on it.
Do we vote now first?
We have a roll discussion. Mayor, would you like me to brief everyone on what we talked about in the ordinance committee? Would that help?
Certainly could. That would be good, so everyone is aware.
Am I misunderstanding? Do we vote on that motion and then we can go into it? Right? Or no?
Well, that motion was just suspending the rule. You could go ahead and vote on that, and just suspend the rule, then go ahead and discuss the ordinance. So you could have roll call, Madam Clerk, if you want.
Right now. Yes.
Lonnie Jones.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
We're already voting?
We're just voting that we're suspending the rules.
Yes.
And read by title only.
Eric Shine is absent. Excuse me. David Adams.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Connor Jones.
Yes.
Motion to place ordinance on third and final reading by title only as presented is approved. I will read the ordinance by title only, to prohibit certain tethering of animals, to set forth the standards for allowable tethering of animals, and for other purposes.
Okay.
Mayor, would you like a brief summary from the ordinance committee of what we discussed here?
Please, Dean.
All right. We met a couple of weeks ago, discussed the ordinance at Ray's request, and basically what it comes down to is we're simply trying to give him a vehicle with which he can remove animals if necessary, or encourage the animal's caretaker to better provide for the animal. There are some, particularly dogs, that are chained to a fixed location, like a tree or shrub, or something like that. They become entangled, can't reach their food, water, or shelter, and as a result, the animals suffer. So previously, we didn't have any method by which to force people to properly care for the animals, and this simply gives Ray an opportunity to force them into compliance and to take care of the animal like they should. So that's it in a nutshell. Sum that up, Ray. You good with that?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question here? I don't know if I'm addressing you, but I tend to agree with this. I just, I want to know, how are we getting this information out to the public? I mean, I know we'll probably put in a newsletter. When's that come out? If this is approved tonight, are we going to start enforcing this, you know, in 30 days? Are we going to warn the people the first time so they're aware of the change of ordinance? I guess we're asked for you, really, question.
We can definitely put it in the newsletter. When is the date of the next newsletter, Melanie? Do you know?
February, I think it's the second week.
Second week of February. Ray, can we hold off any citations till February?
I'm hoping that the education level is out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the earlier stage, just to get the warnings and get it put out there, we have to go and carry it, sure, and they won't know that. Anyway, we can get it out there, we want to do that with food and...
This is not something that is currently a problem, but it has been a problem, but what, part of the discussion I got in on the ordinance committee, am I correct, Ray?
We have more problems than some of that. That's where you're going to go, the most injuries, the problems, everything. I can't get water, I can't get...
I would entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Keith.
Second.
Second by Kendall.
Mayor, I think Alderman Jones had a question.
Lonnie?
I did.
Okay.
I guess I'd rather address it to Ray.
Ray, would you come forward to microphone, please, where we can be sure and get you on audio, please?
I don't have a problem with your ordinance, but I do wonder why you didn't address shelter of the animals in the same ordinance. Every time I've seen an animal improperly tethered, they've also had no shelter, and they're in the freezing rain or snow, and sometimes even frozen to the ground.
I believe it's in there.
Been brought to the attention of the public recently in the newspapers and TV. So I just wonder why you didn't try to address that. Maybe it was too ambiguous, we couldn't really do it?
It's under...
He did, sorry. Yes, it's water and shelter. That's what I was concerned about.
I didn't get that.
Yeah, but he does talk about...
Wouldn't do it without addressing that, because they have to have it all, the shelter, the water, the food. And that's the reason this is brought up, because they can't get none of that when they're all tangled up around the tree, a car bumper, tires. I've seen them tied to just about everything, but yes, that is in there.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Okay, Lonnie. Very good question. We're ready to vote now?
Yes, sir.
City clerk, perform the roll call.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
David Adams.
Yes.
Lonnie Jones.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
Connor Jones.
Yes.
Motion to approve ordinance as presented is approved. Assign ordinance number 952. Ordinance number 952.
Thank you. That brings us to our third item of, under ordinances and resolutions tonight. This is a resolution appropriating $54,000 for payment of engineering services on the North Dixieland sewer extension project. Jerry Hudler, Finance Director here tonight, but this is more or less a housekeeping measure to get this money shifted in the right fund to do that. Any questions for Jerry tonight, or myself?
I guess my only question, if I can ask one, is this the 90, or is this an additional $54,000 opposed, in addition to the 90, we've already committed to this project?
This is a part of that 90.
Okay.
You know, the year ends, and so the appropriation for last year ended.
Okay.
So this just reappropriates the remaining amount of that into this year so we can spend it.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, what direction, or how close are we on, you know, this is just the engineering services part? They're well into this? I guess engineers are doing the surveying?
They're about halfway through, yes.
Are we, where are we at as far as monies for a sewer and all that? Are we there? It's not in this year's budget, is it, to take the sewer up Dixieland?
We've discovered a way that we can find the funding there, I believe. I mean, it's there. It's just that we've got to come back to you at that point and say, "This is what we would like to do," trying to get all this engineering expense out of the way right now.
When are we perceiving that the engineers...
This spring. I think, I think within the next, hopefully, two months, two to three months, mid-April, we would like to actually have this being dug and placed in the ground, so...
Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
I'd make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Kendall Stuckey, and a second by Connor Jones. Roll call, please.
Connor Jones.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
David Adams.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Lonnie Jones.
Yes.
Dean Bitner.
Yes.
And Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number one-five dash zero-two. Number fifteen dash zero-two.
Thank you. Uh, brings us to item four on our agenda tonight. We do have a reappointment of a Lowell Planning Commissioner tonight, with the term expiring, uh, June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. Betty Pritchett would be here tonight, but she is ill, and had given us a notification that she could not be here tonight. As y'all know, Betty has been serving on the planning commission for approximately six years. And she's been doing a great job on the planning commission. And obviously, I think, a lot of that appointment, uh, with her being there. Is there any discussion anyone would like to have concerning this appointment? No one? Would I entertain a motion to reappoint Betty Pritchett to the Lowell Planning Commission with term expiring June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, as presented to the council?
So moved.
A motion by Dean Bittner, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Thomas Evers. Thank you, Thomas. Roll call, please.
Connor Jones.
Yes.
Dean Bittner.
Yes, ma'am.
David Adams.
Yes.
Keith Williams.
Yes.
Thomas Evers.
Yes.
Lonnie Jones.
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey.
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Betty Pritchett to the Lowell Planning Commission with term expiring June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, is approved.
Thank you. That brings us to our committee reports. Uh, first under reports tonight, we have, uh, the ordinance committee. Dean, would you like to bring everyone up to par with?
Yes, sir, we, uh.
Ordinance committee?
Yes, sir, thank you, I'm sorry. We, uh, we met on January sixth, um, there are minutes in, uh, at your table there. Good meeting. We discussed, uh, Mr. Drummond's ordinance on the animal and inhumane treatment. We also talked a great deal about the proposed ordinance of alcohol, uh, at city-sponsored events in the park, specifically Wardnail Park. Uh, we talked about that at length. There is an interest to do that. There is some hesitation to allow, uh, beverage, adult beverages, uh, at Mudtown Days. But, uh, overall, I think it has good support. We're going to meet again a week from tonight, uh, here in council chambers. We'd encourage everyone who wants to participate, uh, or to have input to be here at six o'clock on the twenty-seventh. Um, we're looking at maybe a special event, um, to host that first opportunity to, to try the Beer Garden, uh, with live bands and barbecue and chili and the like. So, uh, you're certainly all welcome to come and, and have input. And we'd, we'd like to hear from you as we move forward with this important decision. I think, uh, I think it's time that we, that we do something.
Did you say this Wednesday or next Wednesday?
It's a week from tonight, the twenty-seventh. Yes, at six o'clock, here in council chambers. So. I'd encourage everyone to be here.
Okay. That brings us to announcements that there's no other committee to report tonight, so. Under number one of announcements, as of January first, two thousand fifteen, Mayor Long will replace Jimi Hendrix as the Lowell representative for the Bitten County Solid Waste District. Sean Ingram will also serve as my proxy when needed for that position. This is where we report as, uh, to the county on any solid waste issues. It's, uh, a fee that we pay, uh, with other cities in Bitten County to be a part of that agency. And ninety-third Annual Chamber Banquet, February twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Fifteen.
Excuse me?
Two thousand fifteen.
Did I say fourteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen. I don't like to jump that far in the future, I would.
Mm-mm.
Okay. If anyone would like to attend that, please let me know, and, uh, we'll definitely put you on a list. We have a table ten that we generally take to that. So please let me know if you have any interest at all in attending, um, that banquet. Uh, Robert's Rules and Parliamentary Procedure Training Event scheduled for February fourth from six to seven P.M. Last month, we had thrown a, uh, on the monitor, uh, announcement of that. We began to get a lot of response from neighboring cities that are going to also join us for that. And it's just a good way to kind of brush up on our Robert's Rules and Order and, uh, learn a little bit more about how to conduct a meeting in a very efficient manner. So I want to encourage everyone to come that can. If you know someone that would like to come, is a member of some other, uh, government agency that uses Robert's and rules, is, you know, their way of conducting meetings, they're more than welcome to come. All they need to do is get with Melanie Easton and let, uh, let us know that, how many to expect. So, um, be some very good training. That brings us to another that you have.
Oh, okay. Uh, it's every year, the, um, elected officials and the planning commissioners are required to submit a statement of financial interest to the city clerk, and the date is January thirty-first is the deadline, the latest you're supposed to turn them in. If you will, um, fill them out, they're at your desk. The only ones that don't have to are Lonnie Jones and David Adams, because they've already done it for, um, prior to their election. And the rest of us have to do that and fill it, file it in my office by January thirty-first. And Melanie can, um, notarize them and leave them in my office if I'm absent.
Okay. Uh, as the council recall, in November, uh, we passed a resolution to express opposition to U.S. EPA's proposed open house gas emission guidelines for existing fossil fuel power plants. I just included, uh, in your packet these last four or five pages, just so you kind of know, uh, how the correspondence went there. Uh, so that's there for your knowledge. Uh, another thing that, uh, somebody may or may not be aware of, there were six representing the city that went down to the municipal league winter conference. They were Chris Sullivan, Liz Estes, Sean Ingram, Jerry Hudler, David Adams, and myself. And while we were there, they presented, uh, City of Distinction Awards again. And, uh, this one here was dealing with the quality of life, focusing on Wardnail Park and all the improvements we've made there. This was, um, presented to the cities of twenty-five hundred or above, and we're very proud to have received that. Got, uh, several pictures with other neighboring cities that also had, uh, different, uh, awards of City of Distinction for different, uh, things that they had achieved. Northwest Arkansas was a pretty well cleaned house down there with the awards this time around. Uh, this is the second one we've received. The last one we received was in the area of technology with Eric Seafried, uh, kind of leading the way with that. The reason I wanted to bring it tonight and make a big deal out of this is because we probably would not have received this if it were not for the efforts of Karen Davis, our receptionist. So much more than just being a receptionist for the city. She writes small grants, she, she enters us in applications such as things like this, does the research, does the newsletter, and just anything that we ask her to do, she does a tremendous job. I would just ask everyone, next time you see Karen, now tell her you appreciate what she did with helping us achieve this award this time around. She done a really tremendous job, and, uh, just, uh, kudos to her. So I wish she was here tonight, that we could, um, let, um, have another presentation. Maybe the, the press would have taken a picture, so, but, but we have. We got a park out there, I tell you, uh, that there's a lot of people, very envious of Wardnail Park and what we've achieved on that eighty acres out there, so very proud of it. And that's all I have, unless someone else has another announcement tonight, so.
Don't forget that February is ice cream month, so, uh, after the meeting in February, join me at Dairy Queen, ice cream's on me like we do so often. If you don't come eat ice cream, it's your own fault.
Anyone else? Well, looks like we accomplished a meeting in thirty-seven minutes tonight. Well done, gentlemen, council.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Dean Bittner, have a second?
Second.
We have several seconds. I'm gonna give it to Thomas down there, cause he's already reaching for his mic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Meeting is adjourned at seven.